Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch a City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I would like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices, please. I'd also like to ask everyone to be respectful of each other and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you feel to comply, you might be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Royo. Present. Counselor Baker. And Counselor.
Park.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Here. Counselor Lara.
Here.
Counselor Luizem.
Here.
Counselor Mehir. Counselor Murphy. And Counselor Royo. A quorum is present. Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Introduction of clergy in recognition of Sisters of St. Joseph. At this time, I would like to ask my colleague, City Council Liz Braden, to please come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone. It is my great pleasure to invite Sister Pat Andrews and Sister Carlotta to come up to give the invocation, and then we'll follow that with a resolution recognizing the service of the sisters to the city of Boston. So Sister Pat and Sister Carlotta.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your welcome. And to Counselor Braden, sincere gratitude for your invitation and your recognition of our religious congregation as we celebrate our 150th year here in Boston. And it is an honor and it is a privilege to pray with you today. And so, to our God of many names, but always a God of inclusive love, we pray. Loving God, coming through this time of global pandemic, we hold in tenderness and prayer the collective suffering of our world at this time, and we grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened. We are a country pledged to liberty and justice for all, but we are often divided across lines of race, ethnicity, and economic inequality. We are a nation of immigrants struggling to address the challenges of many new immigrants in our midst. We are an affluent society where many live in poverty, have lack of health care, and the necessities of life. We are part of a global community facing urging threats to the environment that must sustain us all. These challenges are at the heart of public life and at the center and the pursuit of the common good. God of enduring love, may our personal faiths give us the strength to witness with courage the challenges before us. May we be united, both as civic leaders and responsible and involved citizens and neighbors, in building a city where everyone can have the opportunity to live with dignity and honor. Let us work, loving God, toward a vision of your world as your love would have it. A world where the weak are protected and never grow hungry. A world where the riches of creation are shared and everyone can use them. A world where different races and creeds live in harmony and mutual respect. A world where peace is built with justice, and justice is guided by love. And give us, please, dear God, the inspiration and the courage to build it. God of sustaining love, bless our efforts as we work together so that all may be one for a future yet to come. And to this we say amen.
Please remain standing. No, you're next, Mr. Clerk.
My prayer will be in Spanish. Le damos gracias señor por reunirnos hoy y hacernos recordar que solamente somos el vehículo que debe transmitir con integridad, con pasión y humildad el amor y esperanza que tenemos para cada persona de nuestras comunidades. El mundo en que vivimos cada día cambia. Pedimos que al salir hoy recibimos de tu bondad la perseverancia, esperanza y coraje necesario y para que seamos abiertos a nuevas perspectivas y así formar comunidades donde reine la paz y justicia. Amen.
Amen.
Could you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Sisters, you stay here a little. Bring the rest of your folks up in a minute. Counselor Flaherty, would you like to join us? You're a co-sponsor in this resolution. Thank you, Sister Pat and Sister Carlotta. For the last 150 years, through two pandemics and too many wars, the Sisters of St. Joseph have ministered among their dear neighbors without distinction. Currently, the sisters minister in four congregational ministries: the Women's Table, the Literacy Connection, Casserly House, and St. Joseph's Spiritual Ministries. And the Sisters of St. Joseph are a community whose mission is to realize the prayer of Christ from the Gospel of John, that all may be one with God and one with one another. Sisters of St. Joseph are present on nonprofit boards in schools, hospitals, neighborhoods, health care facilities, prison ministries, and parishes. Sisters are active in the ministries of bereavement, advocacy, and spirituality. The Sisters of St. Joseph work in partnership with numerous organizations in response to the underserved, including trafficked persons and immigrants in need of resettlement. And while many sisters have retired from full-time ministry, the Sisters of St. Joseph never retire from offering the love and support of prayer to all. Counselor Flaherty and I are honored to have the opportunity to recognize the 150th birthday of the Sisters of St. Joseph in Boston with a resolution in council today. We would like to recognize the Sisters of St. Joseph who are present today in addition to Sister Pat and Sister Carlotta. So if you folks would like to come up, Sister Rosemary Brennan, Sister Mary Ellen O'Connell, Sister Maureen Doherty, and Sister Mary Rita Weschler, who is an associate. Do you want to come up? It's no small thing that the Sisters of St. Joseph have been providing service and ministry to the city of Boston for 150 years. And this is an official resolution. Be it resolved that the city of Boston extends its congratulations to the Sisters of St. Joseph in recognition of its 150th anniversary, and be it further resolved that the city of Boston extends its best wishes for continued success through this resolution, be duly signed by the president of the City Council and attested to, and a tested copy will be transmitted by the clerk of the city of Boston. So I want to thank you from all of us. Thank you for your incredible service and your witness in our neighborhood and across the city, and all the great work that you continue to do. Thank you so much.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to come for photo. I'd like to ask my colleagues to come for photo. The council's going to come around.
Can you see? Yeah, squeeze in.
The last time Flaherty took 10 bucks out of my pocket.
You'll go to the Literacy Connection, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk, could you ensure the record is reflected that City Council Flaherty, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, and City Council Royo are present? We also, well, let me say, congratulations to the wonderful sisters and thank you for your tremendous work. Boston's a more compassionate city because of your presence here. We also want to wish you a happy St. Patrick's Day, sisters. And speaking of St. Patrick's Day, we do have a special guest, and it's the Irish Council General here in Boston serving New England. But at this time, I would like to ask my colleague, Counsel Braden, if she would like to help in introducing the Irish Council General Moore to the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we prepare to celebrate St. Patrick's Day, we are honored to have Council General of Ireland to New England, Alicia Moore, joining us today at the council meeting. She was here last year, and she's come back again to help us recognize St. Patrick's Day. Council General Moore was appointed in 2019 and oversees the states of Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and Vermont. She's originally from Swords in North County Dublin and has a degree in human genetics from Trinity College Dublin and a master's degree in world archaeology from Pembroke College, University of Cambridge. She also holds a PhD in genetics from Trinity College Dublin. She later joined the Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade, where she has worked in the Department of Cooperation Division, Development Corporation. Sorry, I'm too much Irish tea, I think. Development Corporation Division, and the Press Office, and the European Division. She also worked at the Irish Parliament on foreign affairs, British-Irish relations, and Northern Ireland. It is my very great pleasure to welcome Alicia Moore. Welcome. Kaitlin Fosha. Curvier Morgan.
Achorja Uachtairán, awes ag uinni uithla. Friends, President Council, councilors, distinguished members of the audience. First of all, I would like to add my congratulations to the Sisters of St. Joseph's on their 150th anniversary. It's a truly remarkable record of service, so congratulations to all of you. It is really wonderful to be with you all here to mark Ireland's National Day in a place that has such deep and extraordinary bonds with our country. And it is an honor to address this august political institution to which so many distinguished Irish and Irish Americans have continued over the years and indeed continue to contribute. For Ireland, St. Patrick's Day in 2023 is going to mark 100 years of our country in the world because it marks a century of our country's engagement as an active member of the international community. 100 years ago this year, Ireland, as a newly independent country, joined the League of Nations, which of course was a precursor to the United Nations. But of course, we know that our links with Boston go back much further than that. It actually goes back centuries, and these bonds have profoundly shaped both Ireland and the United States over the years. This year for Ireland, we're also marking several other important anniversaries. June sees the 60th anniversary of President John F. Kennedy's visit to Ireland, and that is a visit which I think is truly woven into the collective memory and fabric of the Irish people, and I can think of no better symbol of the very deep links between Ireland and the United States than that. We also, next month, mark another truly important event to which the United States, and especially the people and the politicians in this corner of it, played a very, very important role. And I'm speaking of the 25th anniversary of the Good Friday Agreement, which we're marking next month in April. The transformative effects of the agreement are hard to overstate because today Northern Ireland is at peace, it's got a growing economy, a thriving civil society, and young adults in Northern Ireland today have no memory of the conflict. And I think it is fitting that we mark that anniversary here because not only is the city of Boston twinned with the city of Belfast, as some of you may know, but also because while that agreement, it belongs first and foremost, of course, to the people of Northern Ireland, but in many important ways, it was made in America because throughout the years of conflict, through the peace process, the bipartisan support of so many friends of Ireland across all levels of government, from communities, from businesses across the United States, and especially in this part of it, has been constant and essential. And I think it's important to note that it continues to this day. In recent years, we've had to navigate challenges which I think we can say were never really envisaged by the architects of the agreement when they were drawing it up. The United Kingdom's decision to leave the European Union always had the potential to be disruptive for Northern Ireland, for the island of Ireland as a whole. But I'm very glad to say, however, that the support of our American and our European colleagues has helped ensure that Northern Ireland remained at the center of discussions throughout the Brexit process and that everybody made sure that maintaining the gains of the peace process remained a priority throughout. On the 27th of February, the United Kingdom and the European Union reached agreement in principle on a new way forward on some of these issues to be known as the Windsor Framework, and Ireland very much welcomes this agreement, which I think paves the way for new and improved British-Irish relations, as well as a new chapter in EU-UK relations as well. There remains more to do, including restoring the democratic institutions in Northern Ireland established by the Good Friday Agreement. We still have important work to do on things like education, community development, civic engagement, and participation, and also in addressing the legacy of the troubles in a way which promotes reconciliation and delivers for victims. But I'm sure that if all parties come together in the spirit of peace and cooperation, we can achieve even more progress over the next 25 years. And I know that we are fortunate that we can continue to count on the support of US politicians, businesses, and the community, and their ever-enduring support for peace and prosperity on the island of Ireland, which we are most grateful for. Ladies and gentlemen, Ireland might be a small country. Our population's in fact smaller than that of the state of Massachusetts, but I think as the people in the room will know better than most, we have a truly international outlook, and we play an active role in the world, including promoting the rules-based international order. We've just completed a two-year term on the United Nations Security Council, where working with partners, including the United States, we've advanced a number of important global issues in areas like peacebuilding, conflict prevention, and working to ensure accountability for serious violations of international humanitarian and human rights law. We see our role in the world as being shaped very much by our history, and our Development Cooperation Program assists the poorest people around the globe and has been assessed by the OECD to be among the world's most effective, something that we are very proud of, given our history. Like the United States, Ireland continues to stand by the people of Ukraine, offering support to those fleeing the conflict. And to date, Ireland has welcomed over 75,000 Ukrainians, which is more than 1% of our total population. And we're proud of that, too, because because we in Ireland know what it is to flee conflict, poverty, and desperation. But I'm happy to say that Ireland's relationship with the United States is no longer defined by that immigrant experience. Yes, many Irish people and companies still come here seeking to invest, to gain experience. And for them, Boston with its very strong Irish links is a natural and welcome gateway to the United States, and in turn, many Boston people and companies travel to Ireland to visit, to study, to establish a European base for their businesses. But these travels today are based on opportunity, friendship, and close economic ties. We in Ireland have benefited, of course, from strong investment from the United States. American companies employ almost 200,000 people in Ireland, many of them headquartered in the greater Boston area. But this economic relationship now is a two-way street because Irish companies operate in all 50 states across the US and employ around 100,000 people in this country. We are the ninth-largest source of foreign direct investment to the United States, and Irish companies operate at over 100 locations in Massachusetts. So our two countries now enjoy a mutually beneficial economic partnership. So in the spirit of that partnership and in celebration of our ever-strengthening political, economic, and social links, I would like to wish you all here in this most Irish-of-American cities a very happy St. Patrick's Day. Banathina feilaporig, arf galair. Thank you.
Could I ask my colleagues to join us for photo, please? Thank you to the Irish Council General for being here, for those wonderful words celebrating the tremendous relationship between the United States and Ireland, but also recommitting ourselves to the dignity and respect of all people, especially our immigrant neighbors, regardless of where they came from. And one thing we learned from the Irish community is the critical need of food, food access to families in need, and civil rights as well, human rights. So thank you to the Irish Council General. At this time, I want to introduce and recognize Counselor Murphy, Counselor Baker, for another presentation for another wonderful friend of Ireland.
Thank you, Council President Flynn, and thank you to the Sisters of St. Joseph. I was fortunate to be educated for 12 years and then have many years of spiritual guidance from them, so it was wonderful to recognize them. Thank you, Counselor Braden, and also the Irish consulate. I know we'll see each other a lot over the next few days as we celebrate St. Patrick's Day. But we are here to honor Mary, who is a wonderful neighbor and a friend, but Mary and her son Kevin and Michael are here, and I know her husband and her son Sean are sending their love. And also, I want to recognize Father John is here from the Irish Pastoral Centre. Thank you for coming. So Mary Swanton is the director of the Irish Pastoral Centre, and the Irish Pastoral Centre has been supporting our Boston Irish community with networking, social inclusion, personal well-being, pastoral support, immigration, and community resources for 36 years. They started back in 1987 at St. Mark's Church, where Mary then taught before she took on this amazing role. The Irish Pastoral Centre is committed to welcoming the stranger among us, and they believe in justice for all immigrants. They describe themselves as a parish without boundaries, welcoming all who show up at their door with a cup of tea and an open heart. And I have been at your door, and you've been very welcoming for your Irish fish and chip dinners, or I've been there when you have card nights, and so many other amazing just opportunities you give the community. So their incredible senior outreach is one thing I would like to highlight. They include weekly coffee clubs, knitting club, card nights, fish and chips night, phone check-ins, home visits, food support, and networking. They also host weekly sobriety programs, bereavement counseling, a mother and toddler group, an in-house social worker, and housing support. Executive Director Mary Swanton has helped the centre grow to support more immigrant families since her leadership role in 2019. So I do want to let Counselor Baker. The Irish Pastoral Centre has moved from St. Mark's and it is now in Adams Corner. Yes, Counselor Flaherty?
She also taught me how to play the violin.
I did. Yes, she was the music teacher for years, yes.
Can you play?
Do you remember?
Mary, I want to thank Mary and the Irish Pastoral Centre, and we should also mention Father Dan Finn. You know, it started in 86. It was not knowing for sure, but I would think It was not knowing for sure, but I would think probably mostly Irish immigrants that you're helping. Now it's probably a lot of Vietnamese immigrants. But just the work that started in our Catholic parishes in Dorchester and are still being supported through our Catholic organisations and parishes in Dorchester. Mary, thank you for your service and also the Irish Pastoral Centre.
Very much. Thank you.
And you've got to get the fiddle in his hand, see if he can actually play.
He can no longer. Adini Ushla, Agus Accordi, Ilip Galeer, President Flynn, Consul General Leisha Moore, Vice Consul Paul Rooney, Boston City Councillors. I wish to thank Consular Murphy and Consular Baker for honouring the Irish Pastoral Centre here today. As we gather to celebrate Irish Heritage Month, I am reminded of all who have come before us, how every road, bridge and building in our lovely city represents an immigrant story, just like how the Pastoral Centre has welcomed the stranger among us for 35 years in Boston. As Boston's only Irish community resource organisation, we offer comprehensive immigration support, senior programmes, social work, case management, community outreach and pastoral support, with my colleague here today, Father John McCarthy. We are very grateful, and I do need to highlight the support of the city of Boston to the centre during the pandemic. We were, there was a critical need, especially among our undocumented community. The city of Boston opens its doors to us with adequate support, and it was also, we were also and continue to be supported by Consul General Leisha Moore, through the Government of Ireland's Immigrant Support Programme. That has been a mainstay of our funding since we began 35 years ago, and we really appreciate the Government of Ireland's support for community resources in Boston. And it's not just Boston. The Irish government supports small centres like ours the world over. They always give back to the cities where we are welcomed. So thank you very much, Consul General Leisha Moore and Vice Consul Paul. We are trusted and we are valued within our community. And people who come through our doors will remark on how we work with them to preserve their confidentiality and their dignity. We welcome everybody. And in a time where immigration, the need for immigration services has increased, the Pastoral Centre is unique in the sense that with the way we are staffed, we are very small, but we are very mighty. And to give an example, if somebody comes in with an immigration issue, an expired green card, perhaps it's because of a financial concern, we're able to help them re-acclimate back into society. And that is due to the partnerships and the friendships and the resources that are available to us throughout the city, especially during the pandemic when we created those relationships. We formed friendships with organisations here that have never let us down. Currently, we are working with the Immigration Department here in the city to further expand our services, and we look forward to your continued support. We depend on your continued support as we grow our programmes, and I am very grateful to everybody who has contributed. Oh, my goodness. One of our taglines at the Pastoral Centre is "On Shaw, le Kela", and that just means "here, together". It's a lovely expression. Our sobriety groups are called "le Kela", which means "together". They take place, we have a women's group on Tuesday nights, and we have a very large group that meets on Saturday nights, and it has coined the term "the Irish meeting", and it's a lovely programme to have at the centre, where many people come together and support each other. There's a great saying in Ireland, "Ní naith go kirla kela", "There is no strength without unity". We are unified here in Boston in our goals to help and support people, but we are very much proactive in supporting the continued presence of Ireland in Boston. Thank you to everybody very much for this proclamation today and for your continued support. Thank you.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to come up again, please. Father John, you want to come up here? Front and centre? Thank you. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Consular Baker and Consular Murphy. At this time, I'd like to recognise Consular Royall for a presentation. Consular Royall, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you, Consul President Flynn. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to invite Mr Barnes, Mr Lewis Barnes, up. I'll say a couple of words for Mr Barnes and anyone else who is here on behalf of Mr Barnes. Please come up when we take the photo. But good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to speak to you all today about this individual who has become more than a coach, but is actually a household name in the swimming community in Rosendale and across the city of Boston. Mr Barnes, Mr Lewis Barnes, began his 20-year-long career as a lifeguard with the city of Boston, working his way up to becoming an assistant pool manager, and later a full-time pool manager for the Boston Centres for Youth and Families at the Flaherty Pool in Rosendale. Yet it is Lewis's dedication and commitment to the development of the Flaherty Dolphins youth swim team that has impacted so many throughout the years. The Flaherty Dolphins' success under Lewis is immediately obvious when you walk through the Flaherty Pool lobby, and if you haven't been, I do recommend it. The trophies and medals have outgrown the lobby space and they are now stored off-site, so successful that for a period of time, the Flaherty Dolphins actually maintained two teams, one which was associated with USA Swimming, the highest swimming league to compete within the United States. But those who have played on sports teams over the years know that it is not just about the awards and the accolades, but the love of the sport and the community that is built, and that's what sets Lewis apart. His intentional focus on creating a safe and welcoming environment for students and families from all walks of life. This extends to the diversity of his teams, where this year's team was 50% black indigenous people of colour, but in the past has been even higher. The amount of letters that were sent into my office from parents and swimmers over the years spoke to Lewis's character and impact that transcends the pool. One such letter came from the parents of a young boy named Max. Max is 10 years old. He's a black child adopted by two loving parents, two loving fathers specifically. For Max, it's not always easy to find a welcoming and inclusive environment, especially for extracurricular activities. But that all changed for Max when he joined his space at the Flaherty Pool with Lewis. As Max's parents put it, "Lewis does such a good job of letting kids know that he is seeing them, even if it's just a slight improvement on their time. It might take the form of a little fist bump, but that's all that a kid really needs to send their self-esteem into the stratosphere." "Lewis, on behalf of all you have done for youth and families across the city for decades", thank you. "We thank you, we see you, and we know your impact will go on for many more years to come, and we're grateful for it." So thank you. I'd like to give you a chance.
Thank you all. I'm very honoured to be here today. Like you said before, I'm very happy to expose the programme, let people know that we're in Rosendale. We work with youth 6 to 18. The greatest thing that, next to this award, is watching, building relationships with families, watching their kids grow, watch them become successful, confident, better human beings, build their self-confidence. I'd like, I'd just go into like, just one kid. I had a kid come in at 15 years old, didn't really think he was going to do much. It's very tough to start swimming at that age, and he only had two years to go. He started off swimming at like, three minutes 100 freestyle. He learnt how to swim just before that. By the time he finished around 17, 18, he dropped that 100 time down to about, I think it was a 117. He lost a lot of weight, he got confident, and now he's working in a tech company with his father, and he's very happy, successful. Came back, told me I changed his life. That's a great thing.
Thank you. At this time, I want to invite everyone who is here on behalf of Lewis to come up so that we can take a photo with the council.
Thank you, Consular Royall, and thank you, Coach, for your incredible work in this city. Sports is a way that brings us together. So thank you, Coach. The final presentation this afternoon is from Consular Royall to recognise another wonderful individual and team. We'll get to that one next week, guys. I forgot to get the memo. We're on to the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favour of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honour, the Mayor. Mr Clerk, can you please read docket 0574, please?
Document number 0574, message in order for an appropriation order in the amount of $40,676,455 from fiscal year 2023. Community Preservation Fund, revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. This docket, 0574, will be referred to the Committee on the Community Preservation Act. Mr Clerk, can you please read docket 0575, please?
Document number 0575, message in order authorising the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $340,000 in the form of a grant for the strengthening childcare programmes awarded by the Boston Planning and Development Agency, to be administered by the Office of Early Childhood. The grant will fund subgrants to strengthen childcare programmes based on the needs of providers.
Thank you. This docket, 0575, will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, Communities. Mr Clerk, can you please read docket 0576, please?
Document number 0576, message in order for your approval and order, authorising the city of Boston to submit statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, core program for the P.A. Shaw Elementary School and the Charles H Taylor Elementary School pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 70b, Section 5. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies within each of the school facilities that prevent them from delivering the desired educational programmes.
Thank you. Docket 0576 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr Clerk, can you please read docket 05772, 0579, please?
Document number 0577, the message transmitting certain information under Section 17f relative to the Boston Public Schools Transportation Follow-Up, document number 0464, passed by the Council on March 1st, 2023. Document number 0578, message transmitting certain information under Section 17f relative to the Boston Public Schools Sexual Assault and Sexual Misconduct, document number 0507, passed by the Council on March 1st, 2023. And document number 0579, message transmitting certain information under Section 17f relative to the Boston Public Health Commission, document number 0418, passed by the City Council on February 15, 2023.
Thank you. Docket 05772, 0579 will be placed on file, reports of public offices and others. Mr Clerk, please read docket 05802, 0582.
Document number 0580, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on March 1st, 2023. Document number 0581, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting on March 8th, 2023. And document number 0582, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Residency Compliance Commission regarding an updated annual report, January through December 2021.
Thank you. These dockets, 05802, 0582, will be placed on file. Mr Clerk, please read docket 0583.
Document number 0583, communication was received from the city clerk, transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for a city council action on the designation of the first church in Roxbury, 160 Roxbury Street, Boston, Mass, as a landmark in effect after April 5th, 2023, if not acted upon.
Thank you. This docket, 0583, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Transportation, Development, reports of committees. Mr Clerk, please read docket 03192, 0321, please.
Document number 0319, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 25th, 2023. Document number 0319, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Vivian Leonard as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, submits a report recommending that the docket be placed on file. Document number 0320, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 25th, 2023. Document number 0320, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Sammy Nabousey as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, submits a report that the docket ought to be placed on file. And document number 0321, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 25th, 2023. Document number 0321, notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Vivian Lee as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, submits a report recommending that the docket ought to be placed on file.
Thank you. The Chair recognises Consular Royall, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Consular Royall, you have the floor.
The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on Thursday, March 9th, on docket 0319, 0320 and 0321, which are matters sponsored by Mayor Wu concerning the appointment of members for the Municipal Lobbying Commission. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Consul President Flynn and Councillors Kenzie Bach and Michael Flaherty. I'd also like to thank the appointees for attending, Vivian Leonard, former Director of Human Resources for the city of Boston, Sammy Nabousey, partner at Rose Partners LLP, and Vivian Lee, nationally-recognised waterfront expert and current member of the Municipal Lobbying Commission. Pursuant to the mayor's authority from the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 15, to appoint members of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission, the mayor appoints the three commissioners. They serve co-terminists with the mayor. The mayor fills any vacancies for the unexpired terms. The commission may create regulations and administration of the lobbying ordinance. They can also investigate and make findings related to compliance with the lobbying ordinance. The city council is required to have a hearing on the mayor's appointees to the commission under the express terms of the Lobbyist Registration and Regulation Ordinance. During this hearing, the committee heard from the appointees on their experience, qualifications and willingness to serve on the commission. We also discussed the purpose and goals of the commission. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, having held the public hearing, I'll be recommending that these dockets be placed on file so that the appointees may be sworn in and continue the important work of the commission. the important work of the commission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Royo. These dockets, zero three one nine through zero three two one, will be placed on file. We're onto matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket zero one three seven.
Document Number Zero One Three Seven, ordinance establishing protections for the City of Boston Tree Canopy.
The chair recognizes, the chair recognizes Councilor Royo, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Councilor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, the Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on Monday, March thirteenth, on docket zero one three seven, ordinance establishing protections for the City of Boston Tree Canopy, sponsored by myself, Counselor Brayden, and Counselor Lara. I would like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Council President Ed Flynn, Counselor Liz Brayden, Counselor Kenzie Bach, and Counselor Ruthie Louie Jen, Counselor Kendra Lara, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Julia Mejia, and Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. I'd also like to thank the administration for their attendance, Reverend Mariama White-Hammond, Chief of Environment, Energy, and Open Space for the City of Boston, Ryan Woods, Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the City of Boston, Todd Mistore, uh, Director of Urban Forestry for the City of Boston, Lisa Mayer, Chief Landscape Architect for the City of Boston, and Max Ford Diamond, the Tree Warden for the City of Boston. The ordinance seeks to preserve the existing tree canopy and replenishment of the depleted tree canopy in order to prevent adverse climate effects such as heat island effect, flooding, and air pollution, as well as improving the quality of living for residents in the City of Boston. This and, uh, this ordinance also seeks institutionalize the position of Tree Warden, Senior Urban Forestry and Landscape Planner, urban, an urban forestry committee, as well as establishing a process for the removal of tree replacements for public shade trees and removal of private trees, establishing criteria for the removal of city trees, and creating a street tree stabilization fund. During the hearing, we heard from the administration on the feasibility and implementation of the ordinance as filed. The committee discussed the findings from the urban forestry plan, uh, street tree replacements, and bifurcating this ordinance to ensure we can look at what can be passed relatively quickly while workshopping other ideas with the administration, the community that may take some time to implement. This committee will hold a working session on April twentieth to further discuss those specific language suggestions and questions. We also hope to work with the city, uh, the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to hold listening sessions within the communities most impacted by adverse climate effects in the near future. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this matter ought to remain in committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. Docket zero one three seven will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket zero three six nine.
Document Number Zero Three Six Nine, message in order for your approval and acceptance of Chapter Two Sixty-Nine of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two, an act relative to cost of living adjustments for retirees.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Royo, the chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Councilor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you once again, Council President Flynn. I think I got, yeah, this is it, so. Uh, the Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on Monday, March thirteenth, on docket zero three six nine, message in order for your approval on acceptance of Chapter Two Sixty-Nine of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two, an act relative to the cost of living adjustments for retirees. This matter was sponsored by Mayor Wu. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Council President Ed Flynn, Counselors Ruthie Louie Jen, Erin Murphy, Kenzie Bach, Gabriella Coletta, Michael Flaherty, and Liz Brayden. Uh, I would also like to thank the administration for attending, Christine Weir, interim executive officer for the Boston Retirement Board, and Ashley Groffenberger, chief financial officer and collector or treasurer for the City of Boston. I'd also like to thank the advocates for attending, Janie Frank, Chair of the Boston Teachers Union Retired Teachers Chapter, Marilyn Marion, Chair of the Boston Teachers Union Retired Teachers Chapter, sorry, yep, uh, let me make sure I got everybody where they are. Alyssa C. Cadillac, uh, President of AFME fifteen twenty-six, uh, Michael O'Reilly, legislative agent for the Massachusetts Association of Contributory Retirement Systems, and Johnny McInnes, political director for the Boston Teachers Union. Chapter Two Sixty-Nine of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two gives local retirement systems the options to increase the fiscal year twenty twenty-three COLA or cost of living adjustment up five percent if accepted by a majority of the trustees of the Boston Retirement Board and the Boston City Council. The trustees of the Boston Retirement Board voted unanimously to provide a one-time COLA increase of five percent at its meeting on January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. This order provides an increase to five percent from three percent on the base amount specified in Chapter Thirty-two, Section One Oh Three of the General Laws. This order applies to all retirees and beneficiaries of the Boston retirement system and is effective July first, twenty twenty-two. During the hearing, we heard from both the advocates and my council colleagues on the importance of this increase. This order will benefit former city employees, retirees, and their beneficiaries. Although this is a modest increase, it should provide assistance to those who worked hard for the city during this high inflationary environment, where costs have increased for food, housing, insurance, taxes, and other expenses. As Chair of Government Operations, I recommend that this order ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. Councilor Royo seeks acceptance of the committee report, passage of docket zero three six nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Out the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket zero three six nine, Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Councilor Baker, aye. Councilor Bach.
Aye.
Councilor Bach, aye. Council Brayden.
Aye.
Council Brayden, aye. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Louie Jen.
Yes.
Council Louie Jen, yes. Council Mejia.
C.
Councilor Mejia, c. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. And Council Rell.
Yes.
Council Rell, yes. Document Number Zero Three Six Nine has received a unanimous vote.
The docket is passed. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Could you please read docket zero two four nine, please?
Document Number Zero Two Four Nine, order for a hearing to discuss the impact of inequitable housing code enforcement of Boston's proactive rental inspection program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilora, the chair of the Committee on Housing, Community Development. Councilora, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. The Housing and Community Development Committee held a hearing on Tuesday, March fourteen, on docket number zero two four nine, which was in order for a hearing to discuss the impact of inequitable housing code enforcement and Boston's proactive rental inspection program. We were joined by the administration, Paul Williams, the Assistant Commissioner of Inspektual Services, Leon Bethune, the Director of Bureau of Community Initiatives at the Boston Public Health Commission, Sean Lyden, the Commissioner of the Inspektual Services Department, and Sheila Dillon, the Chief of the Mayor's Office of Housing. We also had a community panel that represented Evan Lemire, uh, which was a researcher at Harvard University School of Public Health, Dr. Liz Samuels, the Associate Professor in Residence at UCLA Emergency Medicine, and Dr. Adam Haber, the Assistant Professor of Harvard School of Public Health, and Dwayne Tyndall, the Executive Director of, um, Alternatives for Community and Environment, excuse me. I was also joined by my council colleagues, President Ed Flynn of District Two, Counselors at Large, Julia Mejia, and Ruthie Louie Jen, and Counselors Liz Brayden, Kenzie Bach, and Kenzie Bach, I think that's everybody who was here. Um, we ultimately came to talk about a research document that came out last year in April that really highlighted some difficult information about how we were responding specifically to asthma triggers in our rental housing. And so I want to take a moment first to clarify the conversation that we were having yesterday because I think that there was some confusion in terms of what the research was focused on. We were looking specifically at the response rate for asthma triggers inside of these rental housing. So we were looking for mold, pests, poor ventilation, insufficient heat. So in the case of tenants reporting those four asthma triggers to ISD, how were we responding to them? And not only how we were responding to them, but ultimately at what rate the cases were being closed and, and seen as corrected. And so what we found, what the data and the research found is that there was a slower response time in the census, in the census blocks with the lowest proportion of white residents, uh, fourteen percent higher chance of them being marked as overdue, and a fifty-four percent lower likelihood of the cases being closed or corrected. While we were at the hearing, the administration, both the Commissioner Paul Williams and Commissioner Sean Lyden, shared that a lot of the data that they made public didn't really take into account how they do their work at ISD, and so they had some clarification in terms of what something being corrected or closed actually meant. Uh, and so it wasn't really reflective of what they considered the research was presenting at the response time, but more so was representative of when a case got to them to the moment that it was closed. Again, that clarification was a welcome clarification on behalf of the researchers, but it still did not, um, explain away the discrepancies and ultimately the inequities that we're seeing in the response times, or even in the times from a case being closed from a case, um, from when it opens. So we talked about how effective the laws were in preventing these kinds of indoor asthma triggers and the proactive rental inspection ordinance, which passed in two thousand and thirteen. The research took place between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twenty-one, and so the data that they compiled hap, was, was compiled from the time when the rental inspection ordinance has been in place, and unfortunately, we didn't see any signs of change in the prevalence of these kinds of asthma triggers in housing. So ultimately, what we found during our hearing is that there were a number of interventions that we can take to basically close that gap in response. There were not only issues in getting these kind of asthma triggers corrected, but at ISD, they, what they really noticed is that they were finding a lot of landlords who were unable to make the corrections. And one of the issues that we found that I think will help us get these kinds of cases closed, um, quicker is that there's a lot of discretion, that the ISD inspectors can basically use their discretion to decide how long they give a landlord to correct a problem, especially when it comes to these kind of asthma triggers, when, um, they consider that a landlord is quote-unquote "doing work" and therefore the project is moving forward, and also they have discretion about when or if they even bring this to court. And so that level of discretion without having some parameters about when you stop a case and bring it to court if it's not being resolved is actually what I think, and what I think we came to agreement to at the hearing, what is, um, really driving these numbers. Because if you meet a landlord that is either struggling with making the repairs, it is a personal relationship that the inspektual services person is building with them, and they are, um, wanting to support them and give them more time to really correct it. And so, you know, it's really done in, in, it's a good-natured approach, but also makes it so that our constituents and our most vulnerable constituents oftentimes in these black and brown neighborhoods, specifically in Dorchester, Matapan, and Roxbury, end up having repairs, um, have, happening slower inside of their units. So we're going to continue having this conversation. Uh, I want to keep this docket in committee. We had lots of conversations with BPHC about how to use emergency room data and how to use data from people's primary care doctors when they see flares, flare-ups in asthma, so that the onus isn't really on the tenant to make the report, as we know that oftentimes people are worried about losing their housing, and so they don't make that type of reports. To basically use emergency room data to trigger an ISD inspection in the housing instead of having the tenant do it. So we found a lot of creative solutions. Uh, we're going to continue having the conversation, and I will hope to keep this docket in committee. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Councilora. Document zero two four nine will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket zero one four seven, please.
Document Number Zero One Four Seven, order for a hearing to establish a climate change and environmental justice curriculum in Boston public schools.
The chair recognizes Councilman Mejia, the chair of the Committee on Education. Councilman Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we held a hearing in the Education Committee on docket zero one four seven, an order for a hearing to establish a climate change and environmental justice curriculum in the Boston public schools. This docket was, um, sponsored by Counselors Coletta, Louie Jen, and Lara. I was joined by my colleagues, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Louie Jen, Council President Flynn, and Counselor Lara. Our administration panel consisted of Elizabeth Hadley, who is the Science Program Director, um, Elizabeth Meliski, who is the Executive Director and former BPS teacher, and Leslie Ryan Miller, Chief of Teaching and Learning at BPS. For our community panel, we had, uh, Charlotte Rice, um, Patrick Belmont, who is the co-founder of Change is Simple, Jennifer Bode, who is the Education Director at Courageous Sailing, John Walkie, who is the Director of Waterfront and Climate Justice Initiatives at Green Roots, and Magdalia, I don't think that she was able to join us from, um, the Harvard Keepers. Um, this hearing was to discuss the possibility of establishing a climate change and environmental justice curriculum in Boston public schools. We had the opportunity to discuss with many stakeholders in the climate, um, change and environmental justice space, um, and we learned that there are lots of resources and a desire to incorporate a climate change and environmental justice curriculum in BPS. This is also a conversation that will eventually need to be had at the state level to ensure that DESI, um, is on board in terms of implementation that is also standardized. I recommend that we keep this docket in committee and hope that we can continue to have a conversation to see this work come to life. I just want to give a shout out to Counselor Coletta for bringing in the heat, if you will, and really creating an opportunity for those folks who were in the space to, uh, to, uh, encourage us to really think outside the box. I think it was really an opportunity, um, I'm always thinking about, like, we bring people together into these hearings, and oftentimes people feel like they're coming in, um, to get in trouble, if you will, right? Um, but I think that what we're trying to do is find a collaborative and a, and a, um, an approach that is going to help support BPS in, in reaching this goal. And I think bringing the climate justice community alongside BPS to have those conversations is really part of the, the pathway towards that. So I want to thank you for your leadership and bringing together that panel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mejia. This docket, zero one four seven, will remain in committee. We're onto motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket zero five eight four.
Document Number Zero Five Eight Four, Councilor Royo offered the following, petition for a special law, uh, regarding an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Ariel Rodriguez.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Royo. Councilor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also be seeking to suspend and pass this. Uh, this is a, uh, order, we've done several of these at this point, uh, which is essentially, uh, waiving the maximum age requirement for someone who is attempting to, uh, become a Boston police officer. Ariel Rodriguez is a father, has been a Hyde Park resident for over ten years, uh, actually passed the exam, passed the civil service exam, uh, two years ago, uh, but became over age. The age cutoff is forty, he's now forty-two, but he, he became over the age after he passed the civil service exam. Um, he currently works at Harvard and is a part-time personal care assistant. Uh, this year, he received an email or some form of outreach from the Boston Police Department, essentially saying to him, if, if you can, we'd love to see you reapply. Um, and so we want to try and, me, we being my office, want to try and give him an opportunity to go through that process again. Uh, and so the steps to this, we've done this a few times, this doesn't give him the, the role. So us passing this alone wouldn't be enough, it would have to go through the State House. It's a home rule petition, so it would have to get approved by the House Reps, uh, the Senate, and then signed by the governor. Uh, I, I think one of mine has made it all the way through that process at this point. Uh, so I would like to start him on that, on that path because it takes some time, uh, and I don't want to give him a, a chance at that. We've heard the reports about needing more officers, and I want to make sure that if he's in a position where he'd like to serve in that way, that he's able to do so. Uh, in this case, he's forty-two. Uh, the waiver, the age requirement is forty. Uh, so again, two years ago, took civil service exam, went through the whole process, became over age after that, um, as he was still going through that process. This year, uh, received notice that there might be some interest at the Boston Police Department if he's able to go through that process again, uh, and so I want to give him an opportunity to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. Is anyone looking to speak on this matter? Uh, the chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please have my name through the chair. Would the lead sponsor entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass?
Yes, please.
Right now?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to add their name to this? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Brayden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Councilor Rell, please add the chair. City Councilor Royo seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket zero five eight four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket zero five eight five, please.
Document Number Zero Five Eight Five, Counselor Mejia offered the following, order for a hearing to create more transparency into reporting and accessibility into addressing the drug overdose crisis in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Mejia. Councilman Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Council President Flynn. There has been an alarming recent uptick in deaths throughout the City of Boston due to drug overdoses. In February of twenty twenty-three, the Boston Emergency Medical Services responded to a series of presumed opioid, um, overdoses. Most of the individuals who were impacted believe that they were using cocaine. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health identified that between two thousand and ten and two thousand and eighteen, overdoses for stimulants like cocaine increasingly involved opioids. Toxicology screening from twenty twenty-two showed that fentanyl was present in ninety-four thousand Toxicology screening from 2022 showed that fentanyl was present in 94% of opioid-related overdose deaths. Saxolone, a non-opioid and long-lasting veterinarian tranquilizer, has also been detected in an increasing number of street drugs, primarily in drugs sold as heroin or fentanyl, which also can contribute to offset sedation and increase in the risk of overdosing, especially when combined with opioids. Since initially reporting by the Massachusetts Drug Supply Data Stream in March of 2021, this particular drug continues to be detected in a substantial number of samples sold as fentanyl and heroin throughout Massachusetts. 29% of drug samples tested from Boston between November 2021 to November 2022 were found to contain this particular substance. Opioid overdoses are the leading cause of deaths for Americans ages 18 to 45. Fentanyl leads the charge, and according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, overdoses rate are highest among urban Black communities. And I will just say that this, the reason why our office filed this hearing order is because we started noticing a lot of social media upticks in terms of bodies being found or, you know, overdosing across the City of Boston, and these things were not being really reported. And then this past weekend, I had a constituent come to my house to share with me that three family members experienced an overdose a few, a day or so before, I think it was on Thursday, and unfortunately, two of the family members passed away. It was a father and a son. And so, this was alarming, because this information never made it to the news. This was something that they didn't know who to turn to or what to do. So I just want to give a shout out to Tanya Del Rio, who immediately took my call and helped support the family through whatever support services that they needed. What I am, what I'm hearing, in communities of color in particular, is that there is this level of stigma, so oftentimes, people are not reporting it as an overdose. And so, I think that there is something here that we need to lean into, if we're going to be really honest about what this moment calls for, we need to have a better transparent process in terms of reporting, and I'm hoping that we can do this through this hearing. I look forward to having this conversation and seeing how we can create efforts to bring accessibility to resources to the residents, so that they know how to best respond in a moment of crisis, particularly in more vulnerable and susceptible communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my council colleague, Julie Mahia, for filing this. In Nubian Square, we have created the Nubian Square Recovery Steering Committee, so that we can begin to partner with Boston Public Health Commission and all of the services that supposedly is being executed in Nubian, in and around Nubian Square or Roxbury. Unfortunately, a lot of the resources that are going to this issue or this crisis is heavily concentrated more toward mass and CAS. So a lot of the people or the population in Nubian, in and around Nubian Square or Roxbury is not getting the services. I'm also getting a lot of reports of overdoses and issues in terms of small businesses having to deal with loitering or violence and other types of things that we all know takes place with the, with the recovery population. But I'd like to, I guess, offer myself, add my name to it, to this filing, and hopefully we can talk about what the work that the Steering Committee is doing. We have begun to create an action plan for Nubian Square. The Nubian Square Task Force is working on collaborating or consolidating these services or creating some sort of ecosystem that's more transparent. But I think what an action plan offers is that when you have specific metrics that you can, that everyone, or on one platform, that everyone can access, then you can actually monitor what types of services are available, resources are available, but you can actually measure some of these goals and objectives for a specific area. So I look forward to sharing that with you and working with you and to hopefully find a good resolution for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add and ask my colleague, Council Anderson, if she would like to join me as an original co-sponsor, so that we can add her on the floor and add you to this.
The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, can you please add Councilor Fernandez Anderson as an original co-sponsor? Would anyone like to sign on to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clark, please add Councilor Royal, Councilor Bar, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Flaherty, Council Laura, Council Louis Jean, Council Murphy, Council Worell. Please add the chair. This docket, 0585, will refer to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness and Recovery.
Docket number 0586, Council Flynn offered the following: Resolution to inform veterans about the resources available to them through the PACT Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Braden. This is a resolution to inform veterans here in Boston, really across the country, about resources available to them through the recently federal legislation that was passed called the PACT Act. The PACT Act was supported by the Boston City Council last year as well. Last year, President Biden signed the PACT Act. This legislation addresses and expands health care needs of U.S. service members who are exposed to burn pits, most notably in the Middle East area, Agent Orange, which includes Vietnam veterans from the 1960s and 1970s, and other toxic substances, environmental issues, while serving on duty overseas. Many veterans who served near burn pits were exposed to airborne toxins from burned waste products such as plastics, metal, rubber, chemical solvents, resulting in diseases such as a high rate of asthma, the DAV, and other respiratory issues. The DAV, Disabled American Veterans, estimates that over 3.5 million veterans have been exposed to burn pits during operations in the Middle East. Prior to passage of this bill, many veterans lacked the proper documentation and evidence to prove that these toxic exposures should receive the medical care that they needed. That has changed. Those seeking claims now should contact their Veterans Service Officer. Those who are not enrolled in the VA healthcare system should, should consider enrolling in the VA healthcare system. It's excellent medical care. That's the medical care I receive, and every veteran is entitled to it. They've earned that. Veterans can also contact my office, Council Murphy, who's the Chair of the Committee, but also Rob Santiago, who does a tremendous job as the Commissioner of Veterans Services. Veterans can also visit the VA Medical Center in Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury as well. So I wanted to use this opportunity to encourage our veterans who are watching on TV, or maybe in the media as well, to apply for these benefits, and if they apply before August 10th, 2023, it will be backdated so that they receive enhanced benefits. Hope my colleagues will support this. Want to say thank you to my colleagues for their support for many years in support of veterans and military families. I had the opportunity last year to go down to DC and testify with Commissioner Santiago in support of this federal legislation with Commissioner Santiago. But I also want to highlight the critical role the Boston City Council played in supporting this. It meant a lot to so many veterans across the city.
Thank you, Council Braden.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Is anyone looking to speak on this matter? Is anyone looking to add, would like to add their name? Council Royal, Council Baker, Council Bar, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louis Jean, Council Murphy, Council Worell, and please add my name. Council Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0586. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This file, this docket has been adopted. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, can you please read docket 0587, please?
Docket number 0587, Council Mahia offered the following: Resolution opposing the Eversource substation on the Chelsea Creek waterfront in East Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I would like to add Council Coletta and Council Louis Jean as original co-sponsors to docket
Hearing no objection, Council Coletta and Council Louis Jean are added. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia.
Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules and ask that my colleagues to vote affirmatively towards a resolution opposing the Eversource substation on the Chelsea Creek waterfront in East Boston. For nearly nine years, the substation has been overwhelmingly opposed by elected officials, residents, and experts, as it would result in the concentration of potentially dangerous and unnecessary infrastructure obstruction of neighborhood access to open space and the waterfront, and an increased risk to neighborhood climate resiliency. The proximity of the proposed, sorry, I have a new phone. I don't know how to use, hold on one second. Let me turn this, I don't know how to turn off my phone. The proximity of the proposed substation being 300 feet to residential housing, 60 feet to recreational spaces, and 450 feet to combustible fuel storage tanks remain a serious concern. The neighborhood of East Boston is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse communities in Massachusetts. More than 60% of its population are people of color, and more than 50% are foreign-born. The state has designated nearly every part of East Boston as an environmental justice community. In November of 2021, the people of Boston let their opinion be known in a non-binding ballot question, where nearly 84% of voters opposed the sighting of the substation on Condor Street. Currently, the permits that Eversource received from the Commonwealth Energy Facility Sitting Board are pending an appeal to be heard in the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, but we cannot sit idly by while we wait for their decision. Therefore, I would like to ask my Boston City Council colleagues to go on the record and continue opposition to Eversource substation and support a full vetting of an alternative, more appropriate sites closer to sources of major electrical demand and growth, and in far safer context, this distance from residencies, playgrounds, and public ways, and in more flood-proof areas such as Logan International Airport. I'd like to thank Green Roots and the many advocates that have been on the forefront of this issue. I know that Council then, Council Edwards, was a big advocate, and I'm really encouraged by her leadership now that she's moved on to the state, and looking forward to her partnership alongside my colleagues to give the folks in East Boston what they've been fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mahia. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, President Flynn. I rise to stand in solidarity again for what seems like the millions of time I've spoken on this, on numerous occasions, both as an aide and now in my capacity as City Councilor. I rise in support of my neighbors in Eagle Hill, who for eight years have said that they do not want an electrical substation in their neighborhood. This environmental injustice was placed in our community despite a call for more data to justify the need of the substation. And as a response, the Energy Facility Sitting Board granted Eversource a special certificate that allowed them to bypass 14 state and local environmental permits it was struggling to get. There are significant safety concerns, given its close proximity to the Chelsea Creek and a highly utilized park. Easty bears the burden of an international airport, fuel tankers in that area where many Latinx residents live. It has been mentioned that we have one of the lowest tree canopies in the city. Adding another piece of infrastructure to an already overburdened part of the neighborhood where residents do not speak English as a first language is the definition of an injustice. This history is long, and we can add this resolution to the long list of actions taken by this council, including a six-hour hearing in the summer of 2020 that brought Eversource to the table to respond to a demand of activists and residents in the community, a resolution passed in February 2021 in support of the non-binding ballot question, a non-binding advisory opinion ballot measure by residents pushed forth by 10 residents of East Boston, a home rule petition passed through this body in April 2022, allowing for better protections against public utility companies in our zoning code, in addition to the dozens of meetings and protests since 2016. We have exhausted all areas of advocacy and seek appeal to those at the highest levels of the state. For this calendar year, three months into 2023, I recognize that we don't have anything on the books that will affirm our support or this institution's support of our residents against the substation. I want to make that very clear. And so, this gesture is welcome from my council colleague, Julie Mahia, and thank you. Shout out to Green Roots and CLF for their efforts, including submitting an appeal to the Supreme Judicial Court against that special environmental certificate. I'd like to point out that there is precedent to stop something like this, even though the permits have been granted by the state, and this is the crux of what we're trying to say here. In 2021, DEP rescinded an air quality permit for a biomass facility in Springfield for the fact that it had a disproportionate burden on BIPOC communities surrounding the facility. Massachusetts also recently passed a new comprehensive climate law that included stronger provisions about environmental justice communities. What I'm calling for, and what we're calling for, is pause. We're calling for a reset. We're calling for a review and a potential reopening of these proceedings that led the EFSB letting Eversource run roughshod over the process and approving these 14 special permits and special certificate. I think it's fair to at least call for this delay, to maybe call for an equity audit if the substation was cited equitably, and to see if we're in compliance with this new environmental justice law that was passed at the state. So this is just one ask. There are still structural changes that we need to make to break down this system that led us here in the first place. There's currently a House docket sponsored by Representative Modaro that seeks to reform the EFSB. As early as two hours ago, Governor Healy announced new appointees to the EFSB, including environmental standout and attorney CLF Vice President Stacy Rubin, so I'm very pleased at that. And I'd just like to continue our advocacy beyond this body, ask my colleagues to support this, and then potentially go up to the State House and stand with our residents in support of that, as well as the home rule petition that I mentioned before. So I want to give a shout out to all the advocates, my council colleagues, and thank you so much for standing with East Boston during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The Chair recognizes Council Louis Jean. Council Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I think Council Mahia for finding this resolution, and I think Council Coletta for the laundry list of efforts, both as an aide and now as City Councilor for East Boston, has made to fight against the substation. My office has been really actively engaged in the meetings and the gatherings and the protests since we've been here, and prior to us being here, we've been on the phone with East Boston residents when they've been arrested for protesting, and making sure that they have everything that they need, and have been talking about the actions that we need to take at, with the Governor, to ensure that we get that equity audit and that she hears the voices of East Boston residents. We're a party to that legal proceeding before the EFSB, and to I testified before the Siting Board against the substation and against the environmental harms, and really looking to Massport to step up. If we're thinking about the need to build a stronger grid, a part of that is because of the location of the airport, and that they bear responsibility to build out the grid. And so, thinking about alternative locations, Massport needs to be part of this conversation. So I want to uplift the Boston residents group, which includes Tanya Del Rio, Ben Downing, Brita Lundberg, Penn Lo, Julie Muniz, Heather O'Brien, and my office that did the testimony and filing alongside the, alongside CLF and Green Roots and all of those involved, some of which, some of whom Council Coletta named. We filed testimony- We filed testimony and participated in cross-examination. And my office, especially my Director of Policy, East Boston resident, continues to participate in meetings about airport expansion via Hall Road meetings, Air Inc. meetings, Massport community meetings, and East Boston Mothers Out Front Air Quality Summit. And we'll continue to lean in on this discussion and look forward to continuing to partner with Councilor Coletta. East Boston residents, especially a lot of the Latinx residents who were on the forefront of protests that led to their arrest, and we appreciate the advocacy, and we just want them to know that we on the City Council stand in solidarity with them and are having conversations at the state level to see what we can do to prevent the substation from going up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Louie Jean. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to sign on? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Bach, Councilor Braden, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara. Please add the Chair. Please add Councilor Worrell. Councilor Mejia? Councilor Coletta? Councilor Louie Jean? Seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0587. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on docket 0587. Councilor Royo?
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker?
Nay.
Councilor Baker, nay. Councilor Bach?
Aye.
Councilor Bach, aye. Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta?
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Council Lara?
Yes.
Council Lara, yes.
Yes.
Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia?
C.
Council Mejia, C. Council Murphy?
No.
Council Murphy, no. Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Document number 0587 has received 11 votes in the affirmative and two votes in the negative.
This docket has been adopted. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0588.
Document number 0588. Council Flynn for Council Coletta.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0588. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0589.
Document number 0589. Council Flynn for Council Louie Jean.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0589. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are five additional late file matters. These are all personnel orders. The late file matters should be on everyone's desk right now. I'm going to take a quick minute to confirm they are.
Personnel.
Okay, okay. Mr. Clerk, we're going to take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding these late file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matters have been added into the agenda. Mr. Clerk, the first late file matter, please.
First late file matter, personnel order for Councilor Flynn for Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file matter.
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Councilor Bach.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the third late file matter.
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Councilor Mejia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this third late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the fourth late file matter.
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Councilor Baker.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the fourth late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the fifth late file matter into the record.
Personnel order, Council Flynn for Councilor Murphy.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the late file matter, the fifth late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to pull something from the green sheets may do so now. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I'm requesting to pull docket 0119, page 10 of 12 of the green sheets, please.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read this docket, 0119, into the record, please?
From the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, docket number 0119. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $235,000 in the form of a grant for the Food, Fuel, and Shelter Grant awarded by the Boston Foundation. Be administered by the Office of Human Services. The grant will fund the city's efforts to expand its mobile outreach to connect people more equitably and effectively to housing, treatment, and other services.
Mr. Clerk, can you please poll the committee members to see if they would allow this docket to come before the body?
Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery, Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
And Councilor Royo?
Yes.
Docket 0, this docket is now properly before the body. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As the clerk just said, this grant was given by the Boston Foundation and is for $235,000, and it will be administered by our Office of Human Services. This is needed money that will help support housing, food, sources, and others. So I'm asking my colleagues if they will reconsider spending passes today so we can get this grant given to the correct office.
Thank you, Council Murphy.
Thank you.
Council Murphy moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0119. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0119 has passed. We are now moving to the consent agenda. I am informed by the clerk that there is one addition to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We're on to, we're on to memorials. Today, we're going to adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councilor Royo, Robert Francis Hannan. For Councilor Bach? And Council Flynn? Anne Louise Connelly. For Councilor Braden? For Councilor Worrell? Gloria Martley. A moment of silence, please. At this time, I want to ask my colleagues if there is someone that they would like to speak about, a loved one, a neighbor, a family member, friend, a constituent. Please raise your hand. I'll go around, starting with Councilor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Council Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to put in a word in memoriam about Anne Louise Connelly, who we just recognized. She was the sister of Bill McGonigal, who I used to work for at the VHA, and married to John Connelly, who did tremendous work on housing in the city, including under your father's administration, and was someone my grandfather worked with. But really, I want to remark on Anne in her own right for everything that she did as a special ed teacher, the first special ed teacher at the Trotter School, and then somebody who, with the Education Committee up at the Senate, actually pushed through major Senate, major special ed legislation. I think worked on special education resources for both English and Spanish-speaking students at the Murphy School, and also had an enormous role on the Park side in the city as both an Assistant Commissioner for Parks and also as a trustee of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. So she was really somebody who, in addition to having a rich private life of really, you know, supporting in her South Boston where she grew up and really being an amazing anchor for her family, she's just a remarkable woman, and it was an honor to know her. So just wanted to remark on her passing and express condolences to the Connellies and McGonigals. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bach. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, I just wanted to say a few short words about Margaret Peggy DeBudo Ronan. She's the former wife of Brian Ronan from Inspection Services, and she had to leave us way too soon. She passed away at the age of 55, leaving a young son, and it's a very sad situation. But she also, Brian, we know from his work in Inspection Services. Peggy was a very much loved Boston police officer, and I think she leaves a great loss to our communities across Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you, Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. This is an announcement, but I just want to remind people that everyone is invited on Friday at noon for the flag raising to celebrate, continue to celebrate Irish American Heritage Month, right here on the plaza at noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thanks for the announce, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the announcement. Council Murphy, I think we have a budget hearing, outdoor or listening session, a workshop thing. I would have loved to be here, but just letting you know in advance that a lot of us won't be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Right, that means Flynn's buying because there's not going to be as many people there as there is.
I would also like to recognize, I'd also like to recognize Randy Greeley from the Firefighters Union, Local 718, and to recognize the tremendous work of a man and woman of the Fire Department play in our city. The Chair moves that when the City Council adjourns today, we do so in memory of those individuals mentioned today. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, March 22, at 12:00 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the clerk, the stenographer, my City Council colleagues, their staff, City Council central staff, and to our security officers in this building as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.